All right, hello everybody. I'm going to call the March 18th regular board meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education to order. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There's a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 11. If anyone would like to make a public comment tonight, the cards to fill out are right outside the door where you came in. You can fill it out, put it in the appropriate basket, and those will be picked up right after the superintendent's report. And at this time, if you would all please stand and join us as we join the Central Middle School Student Leadership Group with those pledge.
Will all non-military members, please remove any non-religious headgear and place your hand over your heart. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
All right, thank you very much, guys. Hey, I've got... Oh, Simper, wow, there's a lot of you. This is awesome. Thank you for coming and joining us tonight. Please say your name out loud for everybody so they can hear.
Tyler.
Thank you very much, Tyler. Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Collette Deloitte.
Thank you.
Tiffany Gardner.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Mason Williams.
Mason, thank you.
D.W.
Reglaid, no? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Scarlett DeGrasse.
Thank you.
Dossie Nocke.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Emily.
Thank you.
Wow, you're beautiful.
Thank you, Lydia. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you being here tonight. You may take it away, Mr. Hagan.
Awesome. How about 14 middle schoolers, student leaders, giving their pledge on our night here. Thank you, Dr. Fawcett, Dr. Shugel, and the board. I want to thank all of our SROs back there. And I also want to highlight that tomorrow is National School Counselor Appreciation or School Social Worker Appreciation Day. So I know I work very closely with Lisa and Sarah on the central side, but all of our social workers do some of my things. So not, I didn't turn it on, did I? I'm loud enough. I do, I do. Okay. So as I was saying, it is National School Social Worker Day tomorrow, and we want to make sure we highlight them throughout the district as well. My name is John Hagan. I'm the extremely proud principal of Central Middle School, right down the road there. Before I dive in, as I said, thank you to the board. I've had the pleasure of welcoming many of you into the building the past few days, as well as our two superintendent candidates, to talk a little bit about our exploratories and some of the great things happening at Central Middle. So I apologize if you hear the same spiel you heard once or twice, but I'm excited to share it with the entire board. So tonight, I'm excited to highlight our college and career tech courses that have quickly become some of the most popular courses that we have at Central Middle School. While some of these courses have been around Forest Hills Public Schools for quite some time, it's really the partnership between our two amazing teachers, who I'll introduce in a second, our community, local businesses, and just the standards that we hold that make this the gold standard for college and career readiness at Central Middle School. The employability skills and the career readiness experiences that our students get are next to none. And you're going to hear from two amazing teachers and two even more amazing rangers tonight as they showcase some of the things that they get to do every single day at Central Middle School. So I'm going to stop talking and welcome up Avery Berry, Nora Gruber, Acadia Vogel, and the woodshop man who does not look like a woodshop man tonight, Mr. Dave Albert.
Hi. As John Hagan said, I am Avery Berry. I have had the pleasure to teach the Project Lead the Way STEM courses at CMS. They are newer to Central Middle School, and the program has really grown over the last year and a half, almost two years. We have partnered with Kent ISD, and they have helped us pair my classes with career exploration opportunities in the community. Two of those awesome exploration opportunities this semester, or excuse me, last semester that we were able to do was have some engineers from GE Aerospace come in and present kind of their career path and what brought them to GE Aerospace, so, and some interesting experiences that they've had as an aerospace engineer. So up on the screen, you can see some of our presenters came in. They were able to bring like a drone in as well, so the kids could see and feel, just kind of explore what an industrial drone looks like. And then another opportunity that we got to implement last semester, and we will also be participating in this Friday, is the GBSU Medical Simulation Center. I won't talk too much about that. I will let Nora talk a little bit about her experience in medical detectives, but we were fortunate to be able to bring both of our medical detectives' classes downtown Grand Rapids, so they could learn about careers in the medical field and what it would look and feel like to train to be, have a career in the medical field. So Nora, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Nora Gruber, and I'm a 7th grader at Central Middle School. When I was in 6th grade and I first saw the electives list of medical detectives, it immediately caught my eye. I knew I wanted to try it out because my mom works in the medical field as a nurse. I always knew I didn't want to be a nurse, but medical detectives struck my interest in a different way. It opened my eyes to the field of medicine, forensic science, and medical investigations. My experience in medical detectives' class was outstanding. I loved the fact that there was a variety of ways we learned about medicine and different diseases, bacterias, and viruses. I was taught new critical thinking skills and assessment skills. I found this very fun and educational. The field trip we went on to Grand Valley State University was so much fun. My favorite part was the cadaver lab. My two favorite parts of the class was, one, the field trip, and, two, when we went around swabbing the school for the dirtiest places. It was the cafeteria trash cans. As a student, my biggest wish is that there was an advanced medical detectives' class that we could take because I had so much fun. I loved it so much so that I am already trying to convince my younger brother, who's in 5th grade, to take this class when he's in middle school. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Hi, I'm David Albert. I'm the industrial arts teacher at CMS. Half of the students' grade in my class comes from projects and the craftsmanship in which they put into them. And the second half of their grade comes from employability skills. Do they show up to work on time? Do they work hard? Are they good to the boss? Are they good to each other? Now, Acadia is here today because she has all of those characteristics. She works hard every single day. She's good to the people that she works with, and quite honestly, I just wanted to give her a chance to shine. So without further ado, Acadia Vogel.
My name is Acadia Vogel, and I'm in 8th grade at Forest Hills Central Middle School. Last semester, I took woodworking 1, and this semester, I'm in Mr. Albert's Advanced Woodworking class. School has never come easy for me, and I surprised myself and my parents how much I loved woodworking. Mr. Albert empowers students to take on challenges without hovering over us, which has given me the confidence to take on challenges and to trust myself more. As well, when we make mistakes, he's taught us ways to overcome them. This class has allowed me to discover that I love working with my hands and has opened my eyes to different opportunities for me in the future. I decided to enroll in advanced woodworking to not only break up with a day that, with a class that I truly loved, but to further my skills and challenge myself to build even more complicated projects like the dresser I'm working on now. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about a class I love and to publicly thank Mr. Albert for introducing me to skills I can use my whole life, whether at home or maybe in a career someday.
So we actually made a video for you today. It's about 40 seconds long, and it shows the students hard, hard work.
At the beginning, I mentioned how these two teachers worked together hand in hand to create a career readiness program for our students. You know, an example of that is Avery wrote a grant through the foundation and through external sources for flight simulators. She then wanted to continue to extend that, so she wrote a grant for Mars Dirt. So now students are flying to Mars, are learning how to fly to Mars, then they're growing food on Mars using Martian soil, and then Dave and Avery worked together. Yes, there is Martian soil, don't ask. And then they worked together to just get a grant funded for a freeze dryer, so they can work together to market, sell, and produce MRE-style things. So it's now you're sustaining life on Mars. So they're really extending the program, extending the students' thinking to create these innovative programs. So thank you to YouTube for all you do, and thank you to the board for your support. Do you have any questions?
I don't really have any questions, but I was one of the ones that got to go to see Central Middle on both dates and got to go into Mr. Albert's class and saw all, I mean, dust flying everywhere and the kids using these machines that kind of scared me. We have some in my house, and like I won't go near them, and the kids are there like got the lathe going, and I'm like, oh, don't lose a finger. But, and I almost didn't recognize you tonight because you got too... But, you know, just the excitement in that class and then also going over and seeing the kids in the medical detectives and hearing about all of the stuff that they're doing. And there wasn't a single kid that just was like doing one of these in the class. They were all really super engaged, and it's so great that they have these opportunities. And even beyond that, in the regular like math and English classes I went in, the kids were alive. They were busy, they were working together, they were engaged, they were having a good time, even in math. So thank you for all what you're doing there. Appreciate it.
And I've had the privilege of being a patient in Mrs. Brooks' classroom. I was part of the medical detective, and so it was really eye-opening for me to go in and not, not give them the answer. They had to ask the right questions to try to diagnose what my illness was, and they did a really good job of probing and asking questions, and so I really enjoyed that afternoon with you. So thank you for the invite.
Measles, right.
I had measles, yeah, you were correct. But I couldn't tell anyone. I could just tell you what my symptoms were.
I have two questions. What, what, what did you get diagnosed with?
I had, I had the Zika virus.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was tough. Talking about diarrhea, but...
And Avery, when does the Martian dirt arrive? So you guys...
So that was the first grant I wrote my first semester in Forest Hills, so this will be the third time that the students will do this. I like to plan it around breaks, so flight and space students will be starting to grow their gardens like the week we come back from the Martian dirt.
Awesome. And then the freeze dried product?
That's ordered, yeah.
It's ordered?
I think we've...
Ordered and...
They got a big check tonight.
The milk duds, please.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we have another wonderful thing coming up here. We have a recognition, and I don't want to give it away, so I will introduce Mr. Jonathan Goey, the athletic director from Central High School, to come up and explain what this award is for.
Thank you for having us tonight. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to recognize an individual tonight who is always going above and beyond. Carol, when I got the call, it was a few months back now, from the MIAA, which is our, the professional organization for athletic directors in the state, they said, hey, Carol is being nominated as the Administrative Assistant of the Year. I don't think I could have been more excited, and so excited to be able to write that letter of recommendation for somebody who unfortunately loathes the spotlight, but deserves every bit of it. And Carol is somebody who is constantly, like I said, going above and beyond. She is at everything. She is working with all of our student athletes, with all of our coaches. You see Carol at events, whether she's working or not. You see her at events on the road, you see her at events on the weekend. She is kind of all over the place all the time. And one of the greatest things, I think, about her is her willingness to help anybody and everybody. She doesn't just work with our student athletes and our coaches. She's in the front office, helping the front office staff. She is constantly being reached out to by her colleagues across the state who are looking for, for help and guidance, and she is at a moment's notice, ready to drop it and do everything she can to help them. It's that kind of servant leadership and heart that makes her quite literally the best in the state. And so incredibly excited to be able to recognize her. We spent the weekend in Traverse City this weekend at our annual conference where they presented her with her, with her award this weekend, and she had, her children came in, and one of them is actually here tonight, so just a very special time, a very special moment for an incredibly special person. So I would like to give her just a moment. I know she is really not looking forward to it, but to just say a couple words. Carol.
We moved here in February of 2014, and I was very lucky to get my job that I held at Novi here. I had been the athletic administrator, administrative assistant for 11 years there, and it was just a seamless transition. I was welcomed by admin, by coaches, by students, by staff here and made to feel part of the Forest Hills family, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Carol, if your family came out, do you want to introduce them to us?
My husband, Joe.
Where's Joe?
My son David is here from Woodlands Park, Colorado.
All right, we'll take like a quick 30-second recess, so all the people that are gunwinning All right, we will move into the business portion now. Could I please have a motion to approve the consent grouping items 6A through D?
I move we approve consent grouping items 6A through D. A second.
Okay, is there anything anyone would like to pull out for separate consideration? All right, then let's move on and do a curriculum report with Ms. Tryon.
All right, this is a little lengthy. We talked about a few things last week. First, we had a district highlight from one of our mental health liaisons, Maddie DeBeau. She serves the eastern side of the district in her capacity as a mental health liaison, and she's been with our district since 2018, and prior to that, she worked at Pine Rest. Our mental health liaisons serve a variety of purposes in our district, namely, they help families who are seeking assistance on getting outside counseling, testing, or even inpatient services when a family needs that. Some of the most common reasons families might be seeking outside services, so outside of the school, would be for depression and anxiety, family issues, ADHD, school avoidance and refusal, and social concerns related to ASD. So the mental health liaisons, they work with the families on what insurance they have in order to provide them with a list of providers who would work within their network so that families don't have to sort through all of that on their own. Takes a lot of the guesswork out of it. And also, just if you've ever had to procure those kinds of services, it's just a really lengthy process, and so if you can kind of get some guidance to start, that can really, really help out in a difficult time. She also mentioned that they can also step into crisis situations within the buildings if they need to, to help with risk assessment, especially in the case where a student might be presenting suicidal or self-harm ideation. And they will also help staff in the district when needed on conducting classroom observations that can help with behavior plans, or even our child study teams at our different schools as they work to kind of figure out what direction a student might need in terms of specialized services. And then finally, our liaisons can also help plan and execute PD for our staff, promote SEL support for our staff, and then, as I said a minute ago, just that help with behavioral threat assessments. She did, she made a point to say there is a very clear list of do's and don'ts that these mental health liaisons have. So they do not provide ongoing clinical treatment in our schools or offer home visits, but they do collaborate with building staff in their ongoing efforts to network with mental health agencies for district referrals. So as a result of their good efforts in this manner, and she, Maddie, talked about how she's regularly networking with agencies in the community to build good relationships with them, and because of their good work in that area, in December, when Eastern High School had their tragedy, there was immediate contact on the part of some of these agencies to see how they could help our students walk through this. They contacted the school right away to see what they could do to help in that area. We do have two and a half mental liaison, mental health liaisons at this time in the district. And then on the note of mental health, just a reminder that on Thursday from 6:30 to 8, there is that mental health presentation and Q and A session at Central High School in their auditorium, and that will be a presentations by our health liaisons, our SROs, and our school counselors, talking about different ways that the district addresses student mental health needs. Okay, now we have a few curricular items, and I know that Dr. Mashad, you're going to touch on some of these as well, I'm assuming. I know, I'm going to give the background, and then you can give the money part. So first off, tonight, we are being asked to approve a couple things. First is the purchase of NWEA or MAP. It can also be called reading fluency headphones. These will help teachers across the district to monitor reading and running records at the elementary level. They will work hand in hand with our NWEA assessments and are part of the assessment suite. The district is looking for a set for each classroom to be purchased from the REMC Cooperative, which was the lowest bidder for these headphones. Also, we are being asked to approve the renewal of Teachers Curriculum Institute, or TCI, for our Grade V Social Studies classes for the next six years. This is currently what 5th grade uses already, and they are just simply asking for us to renew that program for them instead of purchasing a new curriculum. And if you look at the curriculum report from last week's meeting, this is, this is part of a 46-page attachment, which details in great depth the cost for renewing this program per school and what it includes per school. It comes with activity cards, teachers' guides, student bundles, everything they need to continue using this program in Grade V for social studies. So those are the two curricular items that we are being asked to approve tonight, and then we have a few that are coming, that are going on to a 30-day review. The first one, it is part of months and months, I think they said about two years-long curriculum review for our K5 Social Studies curriculum. So they did a multi-year review of different curriculums. As I just said, 5th grade is going to stick with what they've already been using, but K4 is asking us to review a new curriculum for social studies, and that is called Studies Weekly. Our K4 team chose this for a couple of reasons. First, it aligns perfectly with Michigan's social studies standards. It does not require any supplementation to meet the Michigan history standards, among other topics that come up in that K4 Social Studies. It's a commonly-used curriculum in the county for elementary students. It has a simple digital interactive platform, and it comes with leveled readers to hit some of our ELA standards in a cross-curricular way. So it doesn't have to only be confined to like a social studies part of the day, but because it has that ELA component, it can be used, can be plugged in at different times of the day. And again, in the notes from last week's curriculum meeting, there is a detailed breakdown of the components of this curriculum. And additionally, if there's a board member who's interested in exploring it more deeply, I do have a login you can use to explore a bit more of that and see what it looks like. So that's 30-day review on that. Another 30-day review is going to be for college algebra and trigonometry. The current resource that's being used for this course is a text from 2007. Teachers selected this for the easy print and layout, and it works off a conceptual understanding model. It's, it has stepped out problem examples and adaptive assignments, and this will be used at all of our high schools, and this quote does include a classroom set of books that students can check out if and when they're needed. And then as with the Studies Weekly, I also have a login for that, if you'd like to check that out and see what that looks like. And then the final thing that's going up for 30-day review is our AP Pre-Calc textbook. It's called Precalculus Graphical Numerical Algebraic AP Edition, and we talked about this last month, I believe, I think it was last month, that all of our pre-calc classes are making that transition to AP Pre-Calc, so they needed a textbook to reflect that. The review team took the year to look at resources, they evaluated six of them, and this one emphasizes functions and student collaboration. It contains increased digital modeling, pacing guides, and is vertically aligned with AP Calc to prepare them well. So each of these, like I said, can be found detailed out in the notes from last week's curriculum meeting. It's lengthy, I think there's about 46 pages of information there, talking about all the different resources and how they're going to be used and where they're going to be used, line-by-line breakdown. And that, that is curriculum.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Tryon? Ms. Thoreau's, I'm not surprised. All right, we will go on to Dr. Mashad for finance.
This is probably my chance to have a shorter report than curriculum for the first time ever, and we had our busiest month of the year, so that's probably not going to happen. But we'll start at the top, at the, as of the end of February, we're 67% of the way through our fiscal year, 50% of the way through our school year. We have two months' worth of monthly financial data for review in our packets. Recall from the time our meeting fell last month, we didn't have February day yet. So January and February spending, nothing of noteworthy to, to call out. Spending in line with, with expected for this year and in line with last year as well. Mrs. Davis gave us a bond construction update, so just a couple of things to note there. Central Middle School is nearly done, and we'll touch on Central Middle a little bit more later. A Vista is progressing, changing phases to the next phase at spring break, so that's on schedule. Pine Ridge is on schedule. The administration building will be, will start to move in in a couple of weeks here over spring break, and then the transition center move-in will take place over the summer, so that's right on our doorstep. And the Forest Hills Eastern new secure entrance that we approved a few months ago, that work will begin in May as well on the back of the building there. As it relates to the 2023 bond work, the first item on that agenda is Forest Hills Northern and Eastern Athletics, like we talked about before. That's moved on to the official design phase, hoping to bid some of those projects out starting in April. So that work is moving right along as well. Then on to the items for approval, and you can see we've got a pretty good list. We can start with the curriculum items that Mrs. Tryon described for the reading fluency headphones. Those are actually coming out of a state categorical, a grant, Section 35A5, specifically designated... a grant section 35A5 specifically designated for early literacy. So that's a cost of $46,595 for those. And the TCI social studies program is a cost not to exceed $79,380 out of our general fund. And then we have kind of groups of items. First is one that we will remember from last June for music equipment for this building, the Finance Center, as well as a couple of high schools, Central and Northern High School. This came to us, and we asked that we just learn a little bit more about the hierarchy of needs from the music department and how that fits into our other needs. Thank you, Mrs. Davis and the music department, for obliging us in that. And they are returning with the same recommendations. So again, thank you. The Finance Center will be outfitted with a kind of fleet of percussion instruments that will cause us to not need to roll up and transport each high school's equipment here, which takes the life away from that with dings and everything else, and takes time and dollars and all of that to move. So that will be good to have their own set here. And Central High School and Northern High School will also receive New Timpani. So this was bid out. There was three bidders who came back, and the recommendation is to go with the low bidder, Steve Weiss Music, for a cost not to exceed $73,297. And this falls under a capital projects expense, so out of the 2021 Capital Projects Fund for those. Our next two items are technology-related. The first is software, if you will, as for our Microsoft desktop networking and licensing programs. This is year two of a three-year agreement that we are in, but we pay annually, we re-approve annually. We've used this service since 2012. Serves us very well with a whole fleet of Microsoft products, fits with our antivirus and endpoint protection that we've discussed before. So this is for the next year of that agreement. That across the $52,032 out of the general fund. The next is more physical for our wired network infrastructure, which is described essentially as the backbone of all of the technology that we have across the district. These are the physical units in each building that work with connectivity, communication, and everything of that nature. The general recommendation, as we were told, is to review and replace largely this, or update these systems every five to seven years. We're on year eight, so it is, it is due. Five bidders responded. Four of them were invited to demo their solutions. The recommendation is for a group called Delta Network Services. This is who we use now. They're considered top in the industry. We've had very few problems and failures in the eight years that we've had them. And they can do this job pretty efficiently in a couple of weeks over the summer. They were not the low bidder. After we teased out all of the bids and the actual items we needed, they were the second low bid by about $20,000. But for all those previous mentioned reasons, the recommendation is to go with them for a cost not to exceed $1,161,000. So again, $20,000 difference is less than 2% variance between those bidders. And that's again out of 2021 Capital Projects. The next two items are outside, just our annual approvals for lawn maintenance and fertilizer weed control for our outside spaces. And these are both extensions on agreements that we've had in place since 2021, which work in our favor because prices now, I think, for these equivalent services are probably quite a bit more than they were then. So we have the option to extend all of these for another year. The lawn maintenance extension would go to Van Bossen Outdoors. That spring and fall cleanup, weekly mowing, all of those things, cost not to exceed $118,742 out of our general fund. And the fertilizer weed control is a separate portion being extended to True Green Incorporated. Similar agreement for a cost not to exceed $63,811, also out of our general fund. The next two items are furniture-related or interior-related. The first is for new furniture. We have outfitted many of the buildings that we've had construction and renovation going on. This is a request to outfit some of the buildings that have not had construction, but to still give them some, some new life. So our non-construction schools, seven schools, Central Midlands, Northern Trails, Eastern Middle, Northern Middle, Central High, Eastern High, Northern High, as well as the Transition Center. Each of those places, or the Transition Centers, three classrooms, and then between nine and 15 classrooms at all of the other schools. Again, the same process by which teachers and building administrators chose and got to select out of the catalog the furniture of their choosing. Multiple purchasing co-ops, again, five separate suppliers for all of these, and a total cost not to exceed $2,975, 2021 Capital Projects Fund. And the second is a request to install new flooring above the gym and the balcony area at Central Middle School to create a weightlifting space so that Central Middle can offer the class fitness for light and weight training. That's something that Eastern and Northern both offer. Central doesn't have a space for it at the moment, but they have demand for it. So this will allow that class to be offered at Central Middle as well. And this creates a weight room space essentially off the balcony in the gymnasium. So the request is for the appropriate flooring in that space, as well as a couple stairwells that lead up there. So it's well purchasing co-op. This will actually come from Shaw Industries for a cost not to exceed $37,210, again, out of 2021 Capital Projects. And the next couple are for construction-related. First is asbestos abatement at A Vista, as they work through the renovations there. RFP was issued to vendors bid, and we're recommending the low bidder, HV Green for Life, a cost not to exceed $49,603, again, 2021 Capital Projects. The next is some work at Nap Forest to facilitate a new walk-in freezer and cooler. We used food service funds of a few, last July, I believe it was, to purchase these new walk-in fridge freezers. And upon installation or getting ready to install, it looks to be a bigger project than anticipated. That's actually requires a more formal construction process. So that's what this is. It involves opening a small wall, running some new electrical, modifying some roof drainage, and installing a frost pad. So all the details and awardees are in the packet. There is nine bids in three categories overall. And so this is to approve all of those contracts to those low bidders to perform the work for a cost all in of $162,766, again, 2021 Capital Projects there. And final construction for this month is additional funds for the Central Middle renovation. As it's wrapping up, two things have been discovered. One, that there are some costs that were not anticipated that we have run into, or some things that need to be fixed that have not been, that weren't planned on. And then there was a little bit of a thing that wasn't in the original scope that's being recommended as well. So the first are things like pipes, chill water pipes that were corroded, so more extensive replacement work had to be done there. Some additional HVAC testing and balancing that had to be done that wasn't expected. And then the, the other piece is the entrance area when you walk right in was largely left untouched. So you, you kind of feed through this older space, darker space, described as sort of a tunnel of sorts, before you enter this new, very, you know, nice and wide open and lots of light space. So the desire is to, is to update that initial space inside the vestibule as well, to kind of fit with the rest of the work that's been done there. So all of that put together for additional cost of $506,000, including all of the contingencies there, again, fitting out of our 2021 Capital Projects. Then the final item before our budget, or I should say, there's two more. So I will not say that yet. The next, the last large item, I should say, is to adopt a resolution to authorize the district to refund and issue bonds for a total amount not to exceed $20,500,000. And this would come out of the remaining 2014 bond series being refunded, as well as some issuing of a small new series, our first series out of the 2023 bond from last fall. If you recall, in November, we authorized to look at doing this, the 2014, kind of refunding those and retiring them early through a private placement. This was kind of a small, so we authorized them to go explore that. That was explored, and the conditions for doing that private placement were not as favorable as projected. The banks, the rates don't seem to be in line with the bond market as a whole, as was expected. So they've come back to say, can we just go through the traditional bond market process, which is going to be more efficient and more cost-effective for us? So that would include refunding the 2026 through 2029 portions of the 2014 bond, refunded up to $13 million, and then issuing up to $7.5 million out of a new small series of the 2023 bond. So Huntington Bank will be the underwriter for this, with an issue cost of about $135,000. The plan is still that we would end up saving, especially on that 2014 bond, about $900,000 by performing this maneuver and refunding those bonds now. So again, this is just another authorization to explore. And if there are terms and things set in place, those will come back to us again to ratify and to see what those terms officially look like. And the final item is refunded property taxes for the amount of $24,117.95 to Kent County. We also have a budget amendment that we've been anticipating that's a little bit lengthy. Are there any questions on the other items so far that we've talked about? Excellent. So budget amendments are here. As we have every year, we have amendments to our general fund as well as our special revenue fund. We received some slides. If you went at the finance meeting from Mrs. Davis that helped to break this down a little more and give some more detail. You recall, we adopted our budget last June. That had right around $130 million, both revenue and expenditure. Fairly balanced, about estimated $600,000 heavier on the spend side, so dipping into our fund balance just a little bit, projected. As always the case in June, there's a lot that we don't know about our actual budget at that point. The state budget's not approved. And there were a few other caveats as well. Our education groups, associations were still negotiating at that point. So we anticipated increased costs from that, but we had no idea what those were. So those weren't in the budget that we adopted in June. So ultimately, we assumed in June that what we adopted, we end up, we may end up needing to dip into our fund balance a little bit more than on paper, what was shown. And the short story for the amendment is that we have seen these increased costs, but they've been somewhat and largely offset this year by additional revenue that we also did not anticipate. So when the state budget was finalized, not only was there more student aid fund money per people, a foundation allowance sent that we did plan on, but there was additional ongoing funding in the most recent budget. There was also some additional one-time funding. And there's many line items on the sheet. I'm not going to go through all of them. There was a $450,000 one-time enrollment stabilization payment out of the budget that went to our public schools. We earned a lot more in interest income than what we had planned on. So that yielded an extra $750,000. And then you'll see many items on the spreadsheet that are the, are equivalent on expenditures and revenue that are essentially pass-through items that are MIPS related or other grants, that the money comes to us and then we spend it all in the same year, so it doesn't affect the unbalance. But you see those reflected there in the amendment. So the end result, the new projected revenue of roughly $135.7 million and expenditures of about $136.3 million, a new gap of about $570,000, which was pretty close, a little bit less than what we actually anticipated in June. So a lot has happened to yield us kind of in the same end result that we predicted when we adopted the budget originally in June. A moment about the special revenue fund. As you saw there, that comprises our childcare, food service, and student-student activity fund. The only real notable adjustment there is in the food service fund, because we projected to not receive funding for free breakfast and lunch, because that was not officially in the budget at that point. And as we know, we are receiving money for that. So instead of $124,000 received, it's $3.3 million received from the state. So that's, you'll see the major difference and the major variance in that whole special revenue fund comes out of that. And instead of dipping into our food service balance a little bit, we have added to it. So we will be approaching that ceiling again, where we have to spend that fund down, and they're working on how to do that right now. So the overall takeaway of this amendment, in my terms, I suppose, is that in a fiscal year where we anticipated we would probably have to run a bigger deficit than what we had adopted originally, will ultimately end up sort of equaling out with some of this additional revenue that we took in. Our long-term work is largely unchanged. This, this is helpful, but we still have things like an overall structural deficit. We have ESR dollars and programs that are going away through the summer. We have declining enrollment. So those problems are not fixed by this essentially balanced budget for this fiscal year, but they do allow for more time to assess those issues and start to address them. So big thank you to Mrs. Davis and the whole team for putting many, many, many items into this amendment, more than typical, I think. And that's what we have for us to approve tonight, in addition to the other things. Any questions?
All right, take a drink. That was a lot.
Good.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any discussion on any of the items that you heard tonight? All right, so then let us go for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Zemeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGore?
Yes.
Mrs. Thunk?
Yes.
Skelton?
Yes.
Dr. Fossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon, yes.
Thank you. All right, next up is an item that we did not put in the consent agenda because we didn't have an opportunity to have that addressed at the Curriculum and Finance Committee meetings. And it is the Educational Assistance Plan, IRC Section 127 Plan. Ms. Anis, would you care to explain that a little bit for everybody?
I would be happy to. So in an effort to support retention and recruitment of teachers, the state of Michigan created a grant opportunity that districts apply for. And the grant would provide $200 a month or the total of a student loan payment for a teacher to cover that cost of the student loan. The intent is that after about 10 years, so after 120 consecutive payments, teachers are, some teachers who qualify can have their student loan forgiven. But until that time, some of our teachers have very high loan amounts that they're paying every month. So the state would support that up to $200 a month. We're working, the HR office and the business office are working together on the details of how we would make that actually work. The 127 plan that you have in front of you, that the board would approve, will allow us to make those payments to teachers without them incurring a tax debt. So it would be tax-free on the $200 a month rather than the teacher having to pay taxes on the money that they're receiving that is intended to pay their student loans. That's what we're asking you to approve tonight. It's a, it's a great opportunity for teachers. The district does have to apply on behalf of teachers. They can't do that on their own. But we're excited to provide that opportunity for them.
Thank you. And my understanding is this is pretty similar to a program that they had for teachers that work in underserved areas, and they're now just expanding that to more teachers.
And this particular grant opportunity for Forest Hills, it's $200 a month. There are some districts that are in a high-poverty area that qualify for $400 a month, but we would not. But at least it's 200, so, okay, we're happy to do that.
Is the $200 a month per teacher?
Yes, per teacher, per month. Four teachers who qualify.
Four teachers who qualify. And do we know approximately how many teachers would be qualified?
I think we've had about 30 teachers reach out with information. The district is responsible for looking at the information and certifying that the teachers are eligible. And then we turn those names into the state, and they would send us an amount once a year to cover the annual payments for teachers.
Will you, will you remind us what, how are you eligible?
It's very complicated.
Okay.
You have to be in one of the student loan repayment plans that is eligible, and not all of them are. If you are in one of the student loan repayment plans that is eligible for forgiveness at 10 years, then you would qualify for this grant.
Okay. Can I ask another one?
Of course.
Does the money come out of our general budget, then, to pay the loans?
No.
And then it comes back through the grant or?
No. The money, actually, our understanding at this point is that the state would send us the money ahead of time and then we essentially pay it out. So our initial thinking is that we would have the teacher turn in an amount each month because it's supposed to be basically a reimbursement for what they've paid. And that way, because student loan amount, payment amounts sometimes change mid-year and we don't want to overpay teachers. So if they show us what they've paid, then we would reimburse them that amount, that amount per month.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Could we please then have a motion to approve the educational assistance plan?
I will motion that we approve the educational assistance plan.
Second. All right. Is there any further discussion on this one? Okay. Let's go for a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Zemeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. DeGore?
Yes.
Mrs. Kova?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tryon?
Yes.
Okay. We are now up to informational items. As a reminder, if you would like to speak a public comment, the cards are out on the desk right outside the door where you came in. They are going to get picked up after the superintendent's report, which is up next after informational items.
We have one. We have one resignation. Oh, thank you. We have one resignation, Elizabeth by Rosie Finelli. And she is a counselor and she was split between northern, central, middle, and northern, middle, and central, middle. So unfortunately, she submitted her resignation and we accepted her.
And now, I'm the superintendent.
Yeah. I want to thank the operations department, the administration, and the staff. The six buildings that were severely impacted by the water issue yesterday. We started working on that around four o'clock yesterday afternoon with the Grand Rapids Water Power Company. The main break that happened, it impacted six of the northern side of our district. And so it wasn't until about 10 o'clock last night that we were assured that everything was going to be operational. Unfortunately, we still have to, we're under a boiled water advisory, but everything went smoothly. We held school. We had water bottles there for everyone that needed it. Everything functioned. You just couldn't drink the water. So we're still under that advisory tomorrow, but we're operational and ready to go. So I want to thank the staff. Our administration building, as Dr. Mashad mentioned, we will be moving the first week of April, and so we're extremely excited about that. And we're excited to move into this facility right over here. And so officially, the administration building will be closed that week just because we'll be in between movers and staff and unpacking. It is officially spring break, so a lot of staff will be on spring break, but the ones that aren't will be helping with the move. And then yesterday, or Friday, we actually received, we applied for an award. We got an invitation from Williams and Company. And they were going to select 25 programs around the state and offer them $1,000. So we submitted a couple of programs that we thought were worthy of being awarded $1,000 and we got recognition. And notice that our northern high school, northern middle school, special Olympics, unified basketball team would be awarded a $1,000 grant. And so they'll be here next month to issue that check to them. And we were really excited that something special to celebrate. That's it?
That's wonderful. Glad that got submitted. That's a very worthy endeavor that they do there. Okay. Next up, board communications. Does anyone have any board communications tonight?
I do.
Okay.
Our next Equity Community Council is on next week Tuesday, and it will be an open meeting for parents that want to come in. There are limited seating available. So in this week's newsletters from your schools, you will get that announcement to sign up for that if you would like. It is a PBIS information session for parents, which doesn't directly correlate with our DEI initiatives that Tamasha leads, but Tamasha also leads PBIS. And our Equity Community Council felt that a lot of parents have questions about PBIS that we could answer during this meeting. So keep an eye out for that.
Thank you. Does anybody else have one?
Well, first of all, I just wanted, Dave's not here, but I wanted to really commend Dave and the process that we've all been through with the superintendent search. Very smooth and really enjoyed and appreciate everybody who was willing to show a couple of our candidates around. And it was really quite welcoming to see our school kind of come out and pull together and students getting excited. Of course, they asked if he was going to be, both of them, if they were going to be in charge of snow day. So, you know, pass the baton on, right? Right. And I kind of just want to throw out there, I really liked the process that we went through of hearing and feedback from the community and hearing back from, you know, our team members at the school about the candidates and the process and things and the feedback so that we have some more tools and information for us to, you know, as we go through the process this week of deciding who we would like to invite back. And during that process, I think, and this is just to throw it out there, but the public comment that came to us before that we had a chance to really kind of walk through everything, I was very appreciative of that, to hear feedback from everybody. And so something made for the future, what my, you know, see on the agenda, something for us to talk about the board would be maybe to add public comment for our meetings here when we have something special come up or, you know, such as like we've had things, you know, Odyssey to mine, it would have been nice to hear from parents beforehand before we had a chance to talk about that decision. The cell tower, I know, has kind of been, you know, back and forth and nice to hear. And I know, I love hearing the comments ahead of time, too. You know, we get the information. But like just before we vote on a major issue, it's just kind of something to throw out there that, you know, I know sometimes it might be two public comment times and one might be more, you know, geared towards the actual subject matter that we're voting on that's a little bit more, I don't know, mainstream, you know, kind of through that. So, but just something, you know, for us to think about and, you know, for us to, you know, be put on the agenda for next month to kind of walk through and discuss for that. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I have just a quick one. The community budget guide, a quick update. We've been hearing about that as well. That's coming along swimmingly and it's near completion. It is a monumental task to do this for the very first time. And again, this is coming out of Mrs. Davis's office, so just a couple of things happening in there on any given day. But the real challenge and the reason that I'm excited for this to come out, it's not just collecting, you know, collecting all of this different data and assembling it in a way that makes sense, but also doing a little translating work as well to try to put some of this in layman's terms so that it can truly be educational, you know, to the people who are reading it, who don't do school finance, you know, as a job or every day. So excited for that to come out. I would say take as much time as we need because I think it's going to be really good when it's here. And that's something we'll be able to build on every year after that. And then just a quick word from the foundation because the grant cycle for the spring has ended. 51 applications, as Mr. Hager was alluding to, over $130,000 awarded this cycle, which takes the year-to-date total or the fall-spring, to $177,000 awarded overall. Things going straight back into classrooms and to our staff. So very cool. And those checks are being delivered, I think, throughout the district this week and next. So that's exciting. And just one plug, there's multiple open seats on the board trustees for the foundation. If anybody listening is curious to volunteer in that capacity, you can find information at the, or on the website. And that's it.
Anything else? All right. I just wanted to say also one last thank you to everybody for all of their hard work during this superintendent search that we are going through. Special thanks to all of the staff at Knapp Forest, Goodwill Environmental School, Central Middle School, and Northern High School for hosting our candidates as they came through and the teachers that were, opened up their classrooms and let everybody come in and disturb them for a couple of minutes. I think it was very valuable for everybody and we all had a good time. All right. We are now up to public comments. So at this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. Per established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. First up is Vincent Monahar.
I have supplemental material this time. Vincent Monahar, you'll find me at 6860 Cascade Road. This speech is rated G. It represents my views only and no affiliated organization. Every month, we discuss district issues. Most often on behalf of the community, I'll present a systemic procedural problem or ask clarifying questions regarding policy. The cell tower discussion is a good example. Crisis and problem solving are important, but it's equally important to highlight when you execute a plan well and why it worked. And the superintendent interview process is this example. Thank you for making the process an open process. After the selection of the final applicants, you have most likely followed the Open Meetings Act. And I say most likely only because the actual law seems to agree with making this process open after selecting the final six candidates. But your law from Truen seems to disagree, as I've shown you there. Their website states, quote, "Decisions to eliminate certain applicants from consideration or to offer candidates interviews must be made in open session." Now, the dichotomy here is concerning and may require your inquiry. If Truen is found by you to be lacking proper nuance on this matter, one would question what other board policies lack nuance or might be putting you at legal risk. Now, it does make sense to me that you, that the first round of interviews was a standardized set of questions. You need a stable metric to gauge each candidate and compare others. Thus, I understand why audience participation was not solicited in that round. Still, you ask that we fill our forms to give our impressions of the candidates. This shows a legitimate effort to engage with the community. You provided cards for the audience to fill out that might be used by the board for second round of deliberations. It is your job to vet each candidate as our elected representatives. Choosing this as your means to that end allows you to ask questions in an orderly manner. I am, however, curious to see if you will honor all the questions or whether some will be cherry-picked and omitted in the next round. Time will tell. You conducted the interviews after business hours. That's thoughtful of you to consider working parents and community members and position this crucial meeting at a time conducive to a greater community participation. Some people couldn't make the interviews. You made efforts to account for their questions. You have scheduled time tomorrow to meet and greet the candidates, allowing us direct face-to-face interactions. This allows concerned citizens an opportunity to form their own opinions. It is clear to me that significant thought has gone into this process. For the reasons noted, I perceive the plan to be executed well. And it's important that the board knows that things are working well. For I am cautiously optimistic that it is this level of community engagement that will be the way of such deliberations in the future. Good day.
Thank you. Jessica Lemire.
My name is Jessica Lemire, 3613 Alghansi. So I'm not a member of the Forest Hills community. I am part of the North U School District. And nonetheless, I'm a concerned community member with regard to the construction of the 5G cell tower, which I know is not on the agenda tonight, but just want to, just express my concern about that. Like I said, I'm not part of the Forest Hills community. However, I've been looking for ways to educate the community at large in the Grand Rapids area about the dangers of Wi-Fi and electromagnetic fields. And happened to come across the Facebook group that was talking about the cell phone tower and I wanted to get involved as I could. So I'm here to testify to the sensitivity that I have to electromagnetic fields. I first began feeling the effects of EMF during the summer of 2020. Since I wasn't working at the time, I stayed home. And though I didn't do any strenuous activity during the day, I found myself exhausted at the end of each day. And as a result of my research, I learned about the dangers of EMF and specifically radio frequency radiation being emitted from Wi-Fi routers. I discovered that our router was located in the basement directly below me and found that it was emitting extremely concerning levels of EMF radiation, a plausible explanation for my symptom. So some things I do to reduce my exposure, places in town that are located near cell towers, such as Naps Corner, Grand Rapids Township Park, and John Ball Zoo, I avoid, I take alternative driving routes to avoid as many cell towers as possible. And I also wear EMF shielding clothing, such as this hat, which has silver material lining to block some of the radiation. But even as I take steps to protect myself, I still experience tinnitus, continued fatigue, prickly sensations, pain in my hand and eye, all common symptoms of electromagnetic hypersensitivity, EHS, which is estimated to affect 5% to 30% of the population. And with growing concern, it's getting more attention as we're being bombarded with EMF on an unprecedented level. I'm concerned about the children. I'm concerned about the staff. I'm concerned about the community who will be affected by this decision. And I just urge you to consider the, there's a multiple risks and medical and emotional ramifications of exposing the individuals to the 5G tower. Who knows how many will become EHS as a result of the drastic increase in EMF radiation. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Weary.
My name is Chris Weary and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids Charter Township, a father of four in the Forest Hills Eastern School District. I have a bachelor's degree in electrical and computer engineering from Cornell University. And at Cornell, I specialize in wireless communication and specifically cellular networks. I've been in the tech industry for about 22 years, working at Cisco Systems and consulting to a top-three wireless carrier, helping them implement their 4G and 5G networks. I'm strongly in favor of pursuing an alternative Wi-Fi-based solution instead of constructing a new cell phone tower. I submitted a proposal, a written proposal to Julie Davis and the board members here tonight on the evening of the cell phone tower informational meeting. Here we are 60 days later. I traded emails with Julie Davis about my proposal and a few topics came to light that are worth sharing in this forum. The first, Wi-Fi versus cell tower. It was presented at the informational meeting that they operate in the 2.4 gigahertz range and obviously they're the same. They're actually not. I educated Julie on the more relevant factor of antenna power rating and how a room like here only has one Wi-Fi antenna to cover it, but a cell phone tower, you know, and that one Wi-Fi antenna can only cover this room, whereas a cell phone tower can actually cover up to two miles. A higher power rating means corresponds to a higher electromagnetic radiation exposure. Julie shared that the problem she is trying to solve is a lack of reliable cellular service and its impact and safety, on the safety and security of the campus. My gosh, if there's a safety and security issue on campus, why are we all okay with waiting two years to solve it and then just for Verizon subscribers? Don't we want to explore an alternative solution that we can actually implement in the next few weeks or months and not take years? And then finally, Julie said it isn't about expanding access to the internet, it's about being able to reach emergency responders in a timely manner in the event of an emergency, no matter how small, end quote. Let me introduce you to Wi-Fi calling. You can make calls with your cell phone through a Wi-Fi network. So if you have access to the internet, any cell phone, not just Verizon subscribers, could call emergency responders. Problem solved. I'm presenting these options today to basically result in less electromagnetic radiation exposure for our kids and teachers that can be implemented in weeks, not years, and finally solve real problems that have been raised, security, med device connectivity, even connecting with kids after-school activities. I'm calling the board to act and ask the administration to request a pilot of some of these ideas. Improve guest Wi-Fi registration process with the current provider you already have today, making it simple and easy to get connected. And expanding Wi-Fi to new coverage areas, pick-up line parking lot, et cetera. This shouldn't take long in terms of time or money investment. I leave you with this question. If you enter a 30-year binding contract, you are signing up this school district to three decades' worth of technology advancement. Are you willing to roll the dice for the health and safety of your students? Thank you.
Thank you. Yu, I'm sorry, Yunifay Q.
My name is Yunifay Q. So I'm speak as a concerned father of my young kids in elementary school. So during last, since last year, I've observed the domestic change, environment change. Summarize is a political agenda in elementary school. So thanks to the school, my kid learned Rosa Parks, my kid learned Holocaust, my kid learned LGBTQ, my kid learned what is Come On Men Dance. And he's learned half-six. And also I learned, I don't know if it's true, like we're talking about people of color. So that term alone is categorizing people by color. And also, there's a protected class. So I'm thinking of our, am I, are we second class to that high-level protected class? And my kids got suspended one day because he using those buzzwords. And in this event, I did a thorough due diligence. There's no victim, there's no kids upset, it's just kids play each other. And also, I got, my kids, since last year, get multiple, multiple, multiple reports as the two systems. As a two-system, I figured out, it's a power school and Swiss school system, sensor monitoring every time in my, for my kids. Last 2023, since September, three months, 17 times. So, roughly, six times a week, my kids reported. This year, since January, short month, January, two times, February, eight times, March, two weeks to March, four times. All things are reported, like, okay, my kids did say something, those buzzwords, and the, you know, laughed at the school while reading. So, I hope, I really hope of school, elementary, particularly in the elementary school level, we're focusing. I do, I do very positively. It's focusing on the STEM, sports, let's get rid of the political agenda. Thank you, and all the speeches belong to my perspective, my due process. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Krebs.
Mine's going to be very quick. We brought it up, and I was glad to hear Holly bringing up about the public comments. Once again, we should have public comments twice, at least once for the agenda, so people can talk about the agenda, what's coming up, and then public comments at the end, because again, with the cell phone tower, we had a lot of people here that wanted to speak, but fortunately, it was put on hold. There's other issues that come up. I went to another school board meeting, another area, and that's exactly how they do it. They have the first public comment at the beginning of everything on the agenda, and then public comments at the end, or anything that's, that anybody wants to speak about. So, I hope again that you will think about it. I'm glad to hear that one board member has brought it up. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Christina Bacallis-Steiner?
My name is Dr. Christina Bacallis. I spoke at the last meeting regarding the cell phone tower issue, and I have two young children in the district. My oldest is in kindergarten, and this will be very brief. I'll probably be emailing you all, and also Julie as well, more of my detailed thoughts, but it was, I just wanted to know where we are in that process. It was put on hold, and we have really not heard anything since then, and just curious at what point we're going to be moving forward with further discussions. I think Chris did a great job, Chris Weary did a great job outlining some alternative solutions to the problem, and I was just wondering when we're going to hear more, going forward, when a decision will be made, and hopefully, the community members will be involved. I think we have a lot of extremely talented, very knowledgeable people in the community, such as Chris, that bring a lot to the table, and hopefully, will be involved with that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, public comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input, and the appropriate district representative will follow up with you for those that requested follow-up. Is there any further business before the board tonight? All right, carrying on, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.